We want to see you.
What they just do there? Chris, he made me hit some other button.
We can hear you and see you.
You can see me?
Yep, can see and hear you.
I see you, Dave.
Okay, I don't know what happened. Let's see if I can go.
Right there.
All right, well, that's good enough. I don't need to see you guys. I, I went into some kind of weird world. There y'all are. Jason, tell us when.
Oh, we're good.
Oh, great. The Dave Show on Zoom again YouTube. All right, everybody. Well, let's go ahead and go ahead and call our meeting to order. Uh, the Walken County Fire District Four Special Meeting, uh, June 4th, 2020 at 2:00 PM on the dot. And, uh, let's go ahead and take attendance real quick and we'll start with, uh, myself, Dave Hanson.
Harry Andrews.
Chris Parks.
Mark Chamberlain.
Jason Vanderveen.
All right, with that said, we'll go ahead and, uh, jump into our meeting. Due to this being a special meeting, we have no, uh, consent agendas or anything like that to, uh, approve today. Uh, but we did want to go in and, um, as we all have discussed, we're switching our general counsel. At the advice actually of, of Rich Davis, uh, from Schmuck, Davis. Uh, just particularly to the fact that we're all going to be looking at having to redo some documents. We're looking at some both boards are looking at a rewrite of the ILA just to make it bring it more current. We'll discuss that in a moment. And so by us having a separate general counsel, uh, it should work better for both of us. Schmuck, Davis can't represent either board or district any business between District 21, say for the most part, unless it's maybe so, uh, between the two boards. So we have been speaking to at the recommendation of Rich Davis. Was one of the people that recommended, uh, the Quins. We, Brian Schner, uh, has been doing some work. He's another, uh, attorney that we've done some work with in the past. But, and I've been speaking with Brian, but Brian was, is in the middle or was just finishing up some work for District 21. And it could have created a, a conflict, not that hopefully we don't even have anything that any of these guys have to do. So we, the one that I'm recommending, the one that Chris has spoken with, um, is Joe Quinn. Uh, you have Quinn and Quinn and they have, they're very, very familiar with fire service. They wrote the, or put together the two, first two, uh, regional fire authorities in the state of Washington. And, uh, they're very, very knowledgeable. As I said, they're, uh, it's a father and son team, much like Clark Schner and Brian Schner were before Clark, uh, uh, moved on. So we're very comfortable with them. And we, we want to, but I just felt that before we moved anywhere further, we needed you guys to, it needed to be a board decision. And with Mark on, uh, finally on board with us now, uh, we've got a three-member board and my, my stance, almost every board I've ever worked with, usually we've always, if, if one of us had a problem with something, we all stopped, we all talked about it. And we were all happy. So we, we weren't two to wanting somebody, you know, that's just not a good way to do business. So I wanted to bring this to your guys' attention. Chris, can you tell us a little bit about this, please?
I contacted, uh, Quinn and Quinn and spoke to Joe. And, um, he sent us his engagement letter, which I shared with the board. I emailed it out. And, uh, where they explained, you know, their, their rates and they experience with the fire service. And, uh, yeah, they ready to go. We just need to give them the go-ahead and they can review the items that we want to have reviewed.
Great. Am I correct? And then let's let other guys, others ask questions. Am I correct that we do pay into illegal defense fund or legal fund through our, our relation through our ILA? So there's money in a fund for legal, as long as you would get for 21, the ILA.
Yeah, I mean, the way it stands right now, it would be 25% of their budget.
But yeah, I'm, I'm not asking with that percent or anything. Thank you, Chris. So I, I hear what you're saying. I'm just wanting to make sure we do contribute to.
Oh, yes, yeah, we do.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Gentlemen, any questions from anybody? Chief or Mark, Harry?
No question.
I have some questions.
Chief?
I, I have no questions.
Any input?
No, I, um, I've heard nothing but good things about Joe Quinn. So yeah, I think, uh, his, his kind of ground groundbreaking work on ILA or excuse me, on RFAs is a good, that's a good resume.
What I like is he also speaks highly of, of District 21 and his background and knowledge of many of the, the people there. And that's what we want is somebody to come in here and understands our whole goal is to be a team. And we're just trying to, trying to bring things up to speed. So I'll, I'll get a little more into that, but not much. Uh, so.
I have a question. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, um, just newbie questions here. Um, I'm just curious, do we have, uh, a working history with Quinn and Quinn?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
So.
Been many years.
Many.
Do we have as the board District 4, we've worked with Quinn and Quinn?
Yes, District 4 worked with Quinn and Quinn before.
Okay, so I'm just wondering. I'm just wondering, legally, do we have to do like what most governmental entities have to do? We have to go out and get bids, like, do we, is that required in this instance?
Nope. No, not for legal.
Not for legal?
Jason?
Sorry?
Mark's question was, did we have to go out for bids on it legal? And I'm saying, no.
No, no.
Okay.
Great question.
That I think was my only question. You did state earlier that we're paying 25% into the legal fund for 21 too?
Yeah, we currently, I mean, we have to look at those numbers, but we pay part of the, as of the last payment, we pay 25% of their legal budget.
For the last five years.
And, but we, and we also use that lawyer too as well.
Yeah, they don't use that lawyer. So we would use that lawyer and what we do is Chris submits our bills. I want to say submit them to the chief. Yep. Forwards them to the chief and then he, he takes care of it from there and, um, you know, and if there's a question on if whether it needs to come out of District 4's defense fund or not defense fund, legal fund, I'm so used to my other job. Then, then we just work it out. But for basic stuff, it, it comes out of that.
Okay. Uh, no more questions.
That's a great question though. Okay, anybody else questions on that? Because what I'd like to do is make them have a motion. And what we'd like to do is normally traditionally, and if somebody else would like to take this on, I'm more than happy to pass it over. But what we would do is put Chris as our district administrator, uh, as the point of contact with, with, uh, with Joe Quinn, with the, the agency. And then, um, also I would have myself as the representative of the board if we needed to. Uh, I'm going to talk a little bit on that though. Uh, and I'll just do it now. I feel that we hired a district administrator. She's been very busy and very diligent to us. And I think the more that we pull ourselves out of, you know, she deals with that and then she comes back to our board as a whole, because she can talk to any one of us. Um, I think that's a better way to go. What do you, how do you guys feel?
Yeah, I like that.
I, I'm new. I don't have any input on this right now.
Yeah. And all I'm saying is, yeah, I can speak to, I, I can talk with Joe and when we're getting things set up. But really instead of Dave getting an email and then I have to forward it to Chris and then Chris sends it out to you guys. If Chris is that main point of contact is our district administrator, I think that's a better way to go. And then we're all getting the same stuff at the same time.
I think it's a good idea.
So with that said, if there's no, uh, Chief, did you have any, uh, any input on that or any concern?
No.
Okay. All right. And on that note, uh, why don't we, we could entertain a motion just to, uh, to, um, first off, move forward with appointing, uh, what is, Chris, give us the proper name, please?
First name.
Yeah, Quinn and what's there? It's the law firm of Quinn and Quinn. Uh, as our general counsel. I don't think we need to state for any purposes, but as our general counsel, uh, with our district administrator being the main primary point of contact, uh, as well as I always like to just know that any one of our, our commissioners could pick up a phone and call that person. So I don't think we'd ever have a question. If we want a primary point, the chair is usually the primary point.
So moved.
Yeah. We get a second, Jason? Mark?
All second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And Chris, you will put that into the minute as the motion carried?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Next, uh, what we would like to discuss is, uh, is that the, uh, agenda switch page that here is going to be the meeting with North Walken Fire and Rescue. We've had some dialogue back and forth, uh, with the North Walken Fire Rescue Boards and letters that went back and forth. And you know, the thing I hate about emails is you can take them any way you read them. I have no doubt, uh, especially yesterday, and I will just put this on record as Chief Vanderveen, I sat down and I, I think once again, he and I had a really good discussion because as we've always stated, he doesn't work for me or us. And, uh, it's really nice. We go in there and we can just be very open. And I really firmly believe that both boards are looking at the final outcome of a positive outcome of, I think we, everybody understands a merger is probably a word we need to, it probably needs to go out the window. Really, RFA is really the best option for all of us. However, if, you know, we would sure take input if somebody doesn't support that, but I fully support an RFA. I, I believe Harry does. And I think Mark, uh, for the most part, uh, from our talks, RFA is, is something you would be interested in doing. Regional fire authority.
Are you talking to me? I'm sorry, didn't hear that. You're a little garbled.
Oh, I apologize. I'll try and talk quieter and slower. Is that better?
Yeah.
So we're just talking about, uh, moving forward and, and all I'm stating is, is that really both boards, as we get more into talking about the, uh, issues and we kind of went back and forth. Our goal really needs to be is get the past behind us. There are things that over the years, I really believe that the District 21 Board, um, you know, had to take some, take some real positive actions. And without maybe sometimes our involvement and that was maybe, um, maybe I, I'm not blaming anybody, but we have the opportunity now to pull that back together, get this boat righted, in other words, and we've all can use that term. So what I, what we're doing is I know, I believe all of us have requested some information. I'm really just trying, I'm new, you know, three months, four months in, five months in, wow. And, uh, Mark, brand new. We're just trying to understand the funding mechanism and how that works. And Jason, I'm sorry, Chief Vanderveen. Chief and I, yesterday we talked about that and, you know, I think our, our bottom line goal is, is if we can get in this, our, uh, ILA, we can move forward with understanding the numbers. And understanding, I think that it's not a question here with anybody is sitting on this, in this meeting right now. Not one of us want to see any change in, go ahead, Mark, did you say something? Uh, any of us, we don't want to, we want to, we like the package we have right now as far as the administration, the response. So with that, why, Chris, I, I was going to kind of let you go into this a little bit, but what we're waiting on before we actually set that meeting up, because to hold a meeting and I talked with Robert, uh, Glorioso, uh, Ken Cunningham and Dave Ethic, uh, from the 106 with Ken being the representative to our district or, or to the North Walkham local 106. And it was actually a really good meeting. I was, I was impressed by all of them and Ken Cunningham really impressed me. We all kind of, I think, want the same thing. So with that said, we talking with Chris and Chris, you're going to jump in here in a sec when I stop talking. We feel that we need to have the information. And so when we go into a meeting with them, we're prepared to state what it is we would like to see. Because I really don't believe that the current ILA, there, there's not like a section, we're trying to say somebody didn't do something right. What we're saying is that was written in 2011. There's really been no change except for a little, a few minor things, uh, since 2011. And this district has got a lot different look. Uh, District 4 has one station now. At that time we had three stations. So on that note, Chris, can you kind of take over?
I requested some records from North Walkham, uh, in order to clarify some points, um, regarding the, the local agreement. And, um, I'm got a notification from, uh, the department that we would to receive the records on June 10th. Uh, after I receive them, I will review them and, uh, contact, um, Joe Quinn, uh, regarding a few items. And then hopefully we can have, um, another board meeting District 4 to discuss all the findings and then have a meeting with North Walkham to go over the, in the local agreement.
Any questions? Um, there's a little bit more to add on that, but does anybody have any questions yet?
I do. Uh, that meeting you're talking about with District 21, is that the one with Frank that you stood up?
No, uh, I, I wish it was and it, yes, it may be, but I think they would like to do it as a meeting of the whole. And Jason, feel free if you want, but I, I believe it would be a meeting, uh, of the whole. I, I would like to see the meeting with Frank, you know, and, uh, Commissioner Ansel and myself happen, but I think, I think right now we also have, so Chris, have you shared the, uh, what we're sending to Quinn with all the clarification letters to the other two commissioners yet?
No, I have not. I'm still, uh, fine tuning some items, uh, that I send over to you, um, to have a look at and, uh, but I got it basically done this morning. It just needs, uh, I just wanted to touch base with you on a few items and then I will go and send it out.
And the, and the, and what I'm talking about gentlemen is, is I did a draft review of the, uh, ILA. And I had some input from, uh, some former fire chiefs and, uh, and past legal councils. And, you know, like I said, if this thing isn't broken, it's just, there's things we just want to know how it works and we don't, there's clarifications letter. So what I'd like is my recommendation would be that that would go to Harry, that would go to Mark. You guys would also go through it and maybe ask your own questions, put those back in, send it to Chris to finalize it. Chief, maybe, you know, you'd take a look at it too. And, uh, we just want to, we don't want to waste anybody's time. And time is kind of the essence. Our goal would really be to have an RFA in place, going for it by 2022. Is that, Chief, was that, uh, we were hoping that it could be then. And so our goal is how do we get there, keeping the funding mechanisms of, uh, where doable for everybody? As well as understanding that everybody's intense there. So that's probably going to be honestly is rewriting an ILA. And it probably isn't going to be an extensive ILA inter, interlocal like we have. It's going to be more of a make sense for where we're at today. There's a lot of positive things are going. Uh, we have no issues. I don't, I do not believe we have any issues with labor. So, um, most of our stuff would just be policy funding mechanism type of stuff with the, at the governance level. Uh, from the chief down, everything's looked pretty darn good. So, um, on that note, Chris, we'll go ahead and we just want everybody to understand why District 21 would like us to provide them the board would like some type of a letter saying, hey, here are our concerns. So they know what they're going to address. Uh, we want to make sure that we truly understand that when we give them our concerns, we know what we're saying. And without the funding mechanisms, uh, really there's nobody and, and nothing, not Chief Vanderveen or anybody. Uh, I think Chief would agree. There's not really anybody that can explain exactly how the 25%.
I.
I mean, it works. It's how.
I have a question. I'd like to interject.
Why don't you jump on in?
Uh, not that you talk too much or anything, Dave.
I do and you know that, that's fair.
Uh, I want to back up to Harry's question actually, uh, Harry, you said something about a meeting that stood up or? I'm sorry, I missed that. I was garbled.
We were, we were, Frank Schmellick made an offer to me.
Uh huh.
Uh, Frank is my personal and Schmellick, Davis represents my companies. But Frank has been in the fire service for many years, Rich Davis and they're all partners. But Frank had made a offer from their firm because he's separate from, and he used to do a lot of these meetings with fire districts and ports. He represents almost every port.
Are you, are you referring to mediation or a meeting?
No, no, nope. He, he offered to sit down in a room with the two boards and just say, hey, let's, where, where are the issues? And not charge, no charge. He's offered their firm free to.
So kind of like mediation, but not exactly.
Yeah, you know what? You're, you're probably right.
When was this meeting? When did this, did it already occur?
No, it was offered here two weeks ago and we sent the, the request to Commissioner Ansel. However, and he was going to address it with his board, but I think they would feel more comfortable knowing the facts a little bit about what, what maybe our concerns are.
Also the meeting, so the meeting didn't occur, that's what Harry meant.
No, no dates ever been established. The offer is there and the offer is open. And it's a heck of a generous offer. Uh, also Robert Glorioso and Ken Cunningham offered the same meeting that they would like to meet with the two boards. And I'll tell you what, they said that they would get, you know, they, what was important to them is what I shared, you coming on board, that was huge. Uh, the other part is, is that we really want their input. We want their input. We want to work together with them to make this a, a positive relationship. And they were very quick to meet, they met with Ansel within 20 minutes of that meeting. And Bruce was very positive with them too, stating, we want the same thing.
Uh, yeah, I would just, I just want to say, I, I didn't, thanks for filling that in. I was kind of confused. Appreciate that, Harry. That's a good question. I just want to say that I would support any kind of meeting or mediation between the two boards, uh, to work this out. I think that would work out really well.
Absolutely.
Well, Dave, I'd like to.
Yeah, you would. That's why we wanted you.
Dave, I would like to make a comment.
Yes, sir.
I think that our ILA has to be rewritten.
Absolutely.
There's just too much in there. Like, for example, if they decided they want to go out and buy a new fire truck for a million dollars, are we subject to paying 25% of that?
Yeah.
Those are the things that have to be rewritten in our ILA that we can pick and choose. For example, they went and hired two more people without any consult with us at all. And we have to pay 25% of their salary. That's not right.
And, and Harry, Harry, I think those are good, good questions. Uh, the chief and I had really good question. He, he educated me a little bit on some of that, but that it, you are right is we do feel, no, uh, uh, I'm sorry, Dave feels, and I, I believe everybody does. And I think the commissioner at 21 are agreed, it's time for a rewrite, not, not a make, I was saying before, make, uh, amendments. It, it's, it's just too outdated and that's why we're asking our legal counsel to look at it. Uh, and tell us, give us their advice. It, it is, I hate to say, and it's sure not against any of my friends that were involved in writing this, but it, it's a fairly poorly written document that was written by a fire chief, uh, in 2011 and two chiefs that as soon as it was signed, one, one was gone and the other retired. And so it hasn't had very much attention. So everybody agrees. That's, I don't think that's a question. So Harry, I think your point is 100% right. And as regards to the funding mechanisms, Harry, that is why we have requested how it all works. Uh, I'm new, Mark's new, Harry, you're fairly, you know, you, you're not new, but, um, it really hadn't been raised, I guess. And so we're hoping to see this come back together and we're see, we're hoping to see, you know, Commissioner Ansel actually made a great suggestion. He said, let's have him a weekly phone call, you know, maybe it's like the chief and, and Commissioner Ansel have a weekly conversation. And maybe that's what we do. Uh, the chief and I agreed yesterday, even though he, he doesn't work for, for us. Uh, he made the offer. He said, why don't we sit down each, you know, a couple of day or so before the commissioners meetings? Just so we know when we go into that room that we're all on the same page. It doesn't mean we always agree, but that we're on the same page. And I really appreciated that offer.
I've, I've got a quick newbie question for the chief.
There you go.
Um, and, and it's about apparatus and I'm just wondering because of what, uh, Perry said, um, because I've noticed like engine 12, which is the Pierce, the dash, if that's correct. That's gone out of service and I've seen like an older engine 69 there. I've also seen where I think at the beginning of the year where you guys swapped crews and I think like you guys left them on the same engine and like engine 63 was there for a couple of weeks. And so there's kind of always been this like intermingling of engines.
Right.
Uh, if 25% of our, or you guys buy a new apparatus and we, 25% of the cost comes from the District 4 budget. Basically that, that rig, that engine will be utilized in this district, either at this station or on calls or on.
Correct. Yep. We have, we have two new. Nope.
Chief?
Oh, I was going to say, we have two new ambulances on order and every expectation is that one of those aid cars is going to go here to Station 12.
Well, I'm sorry about that, Chief. My, I just lost my audio there for a second.
No, it was the chief, I think. We all lost our audio.
I didn't hear anything you said there, Chief.
Uh, so we have, for example, we have two aid cars on, on order right now, expected to be delivered in September. Every expectation is one of those two aid cars is going to be permanently stationed at Station 12. Because in the cycle, that's the aid car that needs to be replaced.
Uh huh.
We don't look at it as District 4 or District 21. We just look at it as an engine or an aid car.
Okay, okay. I'm just unfamiliar with how that works because dealing with the ILA that I've seen with Birmingham and District 8, it's quite different. So.
And I think we need, I think we need to look at that ILA and I believe the chief has been looking at that, at how that one could operate. But Mark brings up a really good point. I think we do need to share is that if we were not in an ILA and we were District 4 standalone, we would have that engine. But if you weren't aware, Mark, we just might be burn a transmission out of it. Is that the way to say it, Chief? But we, we had a transmission go out.
There goes $30,000.
Well, and we were, you know, it costs a lot less here due to we do pay into the maintenance. Uh, am I right, Chief? We were able to find a transmission, get it brought up here from down south. And their staff, how fast do they have that replaced, Jason? But it was.
It was out of service for 48 hours.
Yeah.
Sorry, 96 hours. Sorry. It was, uh, it was essentially out of service for 96 hours for the.
I would have held you to those other hours too. But Mark, Mark, I know where you're going with it. You guys have reserve engines in the city of Birmingham. You don't go borrow, have to borrow one. We would have probably been faced with either having an engine out of service or having to borrow one. So all of those things I think are, they're, they're great points. And I think they're all. And I think they're all other reasons why it's so important that we really go as Harry was coming back, going back to Harry. Is why we rewrite this uh this agreement, understanding that. When we go for an R RFA, we're all going to have to be able to go to the community members, our neighbors and our friends. And explain, people are going to ask us how this works. And if we can't explain it, well, I don't know. I just agreed on twenty five percent. I would be pretty embarrassed, but. So I, we're heading in the right direction and. You know, I, I sure don't put these things out there as uh strats or anything like that, but when I met with the local one oh six. First off, I'm going to tell you, I was pretty impressed with Robert Glorioso. Uh, he did his homework on myself and I did, you know, he, and I did mine on him. And he seems to be very, uh, just very astute, very credible. And they, I made one promise. The only promise I said is I've got five and a half years left here. And I'm gonna, I I, my, my only promise is that I'll do everything I can. You all have to make your own commitments. Is that that station will be, will be staffed and it'll be staffed with IF, uh, IFPA members. But I'm not going to tell anybody, I can tell anybody what patch is going to be on somebody's shoulder. We sure hope we know which where it's going to be, but. Um, but we're sure not out to look at losing jobs and losing positions. Those people do a great job every day. And I'm committed to selling an RFA. Is that enough on that for now or Mark?
I just wanted to say I I completely support an RFA and I uh. Think it's in the best interest that we pursue that and especially with North Walken. And uh I am committed to uh triggering the taxpayers of the district by uh pushing that as much as possible.
I I am just impressed with the community right now. I've had three neighbors uh between here and the end of North Shore, I should say neighbor. That have asked, how can we be involved? What can we do? And it's going to take every single staff member to every single one of us to go out and promote something, but. It's before we can ever go to that next level, we need to get this, this. Kind of tension and and again, I know sometimes I sound like I'm defending District twenty one's board. At at the same time, some of them probably going to shoot me right now. However, I know when you go to sell an RFA, we have to be united. And we have to uh make sure that we're we're going to the public with a, with a solid program. And they're not used to having anybody else look into this. They've been running kind of pretty much overseeing it for the last. Several year, many years. And so on that note. We want the same common goal, but we are, we would be, we'd be sadly mistaken in what Joe Quinn stated. To not look at our options. We have to look at our options in case District twenty one defines sides. This isn't the best direction for them. Maybe they choose, there are outs for them as well. And so it's in fairness. We want to be able to go to the taxpayers and say, we firmly believe this is the very best option for them. So, and I think right now. That's how I would feel, but we need to have the statistical information to back that up. On that note, anybody, anything else in regards to the ILA? And our meetings, but we will set up a meeting, but Chris is going to get the information we've requested. There's a couple. New documents that will be uh being requested. I know by Chief Quinn, based on a letter that was just sent out by Chief Ansel in regards to, they stated they, they changed the policy. And they also said they interviewed, I think, five, five candidates in out of house and three in-house. And so they're going to request those. But besides that, I don't have anything else right now on ILAs. Anybody else?
Nothing here.
Okay, Chris?
Nothing.
Harry?
I have a calendar. My calendar says we're having another special meeting on the night. Is that true or not true?
Uh, not that I know.
No special meeting.
Okay, I'll cross it off.
Yep.
You gotta quit listening to me, Harry.
Yeah.
Mark, 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 Mark figured that out on day one. So, all right.
I can't hear you too much, though.
Yeah, I didn't hear you.
That's a good thing, man.
Yeah, I know. I know where you live, neighbor. Uh, yeah, Pete, on the WSRB, I think that's a kind of becoming a mood issue. Uh. We just sent out, you know, we have some concerns on some, some stuff there that uh. Thanks to Chief Vanderbein and all of us, we we looked at it. We wanted to be diligent and straightforward. And uh, Chris went ahead and fired off a letter. Everybody should have received a copy. Uh, Jason, Chief, uh, Chief Vanderbein, Chris wasn't sure if he got that letter. Will you make sure everybody saw that letter? Chris?
Uh, I go put it in the meeting pocket.
Okay, that'd be great. And and basically what we just stated is uh is real simple. District four informed W, uh, the WSRB. That Station eleven is no longer responding station. And that's enough said, we've done our diligence there. However, what we all do need to be looking at, and I want to look at it really with the uh RFA as a, as a tool. But we need to uh look at notifying the citizens that live in that community. Um, I really believe it was probably, it's part of under the operations side. And so we'll talk with chief and and he can talk with their, his powers to be, but I think we would be diligent to. Send out some type of a, maybe even if a questionnaire or a notice, just letting the the people that live out there. Know, know that uh that isn't a staff station now, but that is, you know, but we probably want to put it into something with the uh, with the uh RFA. Where we can show the positives, what, how we're gonna, how we hope to handle that for them. I don't know how that would go. Pete, can you comment a little bit?
I will, yeah, I'll try to, that's uh going to be some professional wordsmithing, but I can work on uh. On how to do that. And yeah, we, I agree, we should, we should let the residents of Station eleven uh in that area that first do in that area know.
Yeah, and and Ralston, uh, Chief, uh, Chief Ralston, retired Chief Ralston. Uh, he he probably can maybe uh give us some thought on that. He's pretty good with that uh wordsmith and stuff. Dave, Dave's real sharp and so whatever you need to do and then we could all look at that. Is everybody comfortable with that? You know, that believe that we should do that?
Yeah, I think we all ought to emphasize the fact that that area will be uh very well qualified. And covered by Station twelve and the city as well.
Oh, you know, we're so fortunate to have what we have. This call on the guide meridian right now. Uh, I noticed Battalion one for the city. I noticed, I think, three city rigs. Is that right, Jay? Something like that?
Yes.
The 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 response, how we work in this county now in the city of Bellingham. It is. Pretty amazing, actually. We're, our taxpayers are very fortunate to have the relationship we have with with. Our inner local, but with the city as well, so. Okay, so that's out of the off the agenda, WSRB. I feel comfortable we move forward. And then the next item is, is everybody seen and I wanted to, I felt this needed to be out there. And so people know, understand what our intention was.
Can we, can we back up a second on that, baby?
Yeah, go ahead.
So you mentioned about notifying the the people that live out there?
Yes.
Should we do that?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. I I can show you three, three cases in three fire districts. That it went absolutely awry. And so we've done a little survey out there and many, but we want to do it in the right way, Mark. You're right. Go ahead.
So uh, just a question is, is the who, what, when, where and how kind of deal?
That's what we went, that's why we put it on the chief.
Well, that's not what I was, I I meant, but uh, is there, um, rather than just uh saying, yeah. We're gonna, we're gonna notify those people out there. Uh, just maybe, is there going to be, are we going to entertain any discussion in this meeting? Or is this going to be a separate meeting that we're going to talk about how that's going to be done? Because it probably shouldn't be done.
It would be a separate meeting and and I think that is something, is why I can't alluded back to operations. Is the chief and and he would probably speak with probably the legal counsel. He will pro, will probably figure out, but that's why he said it's going to be very careful how we word it. Um, the the reason is, is the station is not adequate any longer to support life.
All right, I was just, just a newbie question. Thanks.
Any, any ideas?
How to do that?
Yeah.
Uh, probably a flyer.
What's that?
No, 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 probably a flyer and some kind of social media. I mean, that's what, yeah.
Do you know what? You're right, though. Frank, that's exactly what Frank Schmellick said. Is by pulling like where we can make a positive out of our boards coming together. And getting everything kind of on the same level where we're all together and and really selling this as part of the RFA because. Truly, I think, I believe that this is why we need an RFA. Is because our funding mechanisms change, our ability to serve greater area changes. To partner with more, more uh other agencies, everything. Uh, really, the opportunity under an RFA uh will provide some better opportunity because right now. Especially if if the two, two groups were to split, which probably help us if it doesn't happen. I don't, if not. But if if that happened. We wouldn't be doing any justice to those people out there. And so they need to know this is a good thing. So, Mark, you're right. It doesn't come from a letter that Dave Hanson writes in his fifth grade uh education level there, so.
I, I, I just think it's going to be vital and important going forward to have uh either some kind of mediation or meeting between the two boards.
That's going to happen.
Yeah, and do it regularly to figure these things out. Um.
Not, not wait for a month or till a problem arises. And that was Bruce Ansel, that same comment to me. Chief, Commissioner Ansel. Really felt it could be a weekly. People can join in on a Zoom, whatever.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I I completely entertain and support that uh idea to do that. I think it's. Vital to have all groups together working.
Commissioner Andrews?
Involving so.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Any more on that one?
No, I think we're going on the right track.
Okay. Uh, Administrator Parks, uh, before we, I wanted to, do you want to tell us, talk a little bit about the rental? Uh, uh, where we're going with that? I did meet with Chief Vanderbein yesterday, so there wasn't any. Oh, great. They're looking to charge us a rent or do anything like that, what we are trying to do. Chris, why don't you give an update?
Yeah, we just wanted to get the rental value of the station, the administrative office part. And I talked to Troy Molyad and uh received a quote from him for nine hundred fifty dollars to write a rental letter. And do an uh evaluation um of our office or inspection.
And and that's to, for evaluation, not, you're not sending a letter to anybody stating we're charging this or charging that.
Find out the value.
Yeah, and no, there's no secrets here. Uh, if we're trying to make sure we can. Operate with the budget we have right now, we we do have to be diligent, folks. And we're also looking at some of the grounds maintenance and some of those uh areas, other i, areas that we're paying for. The ILA does clearly state that we can change the level of service we want. It it has to be between the two boards. And, you know, and we can't just do it overnight. That has to be some thought and we have to have some consideration for a year's budget. But we are going to look at all the options, but we have to look at. Where is, we feel maybe we could be, do, be more efficient and um. And I know that District twenty one feels exactly the same, that they want to look at efficiency. So that is again why we've requested all of the information. We do want to know when we go to a table to try to figure out how we survive. Um, we need to know what that office space has worked because that office space is. And uh Joe Quinn is going to make that kind of clear too, I believe, but. Is that office space was not part of the original uh I, ILA. It was never written into the ILA. And just for everybody's sake, the ILA, the last time there was anything that was legally binding, binding. Uh, was two thousand fifteen's payment and that payment was never uh approved by either board to be, go beyond that on an annual two uh. Twenty five percent is what the attorneys are seeing right now. Um, that doesn't mean we're not going to pay it. It means that it needs to be looked at and addressed so we can explain it. So on that note, we're just doing our diligence. Uh, so what we'd like is a motion to uh move forward with uh. To have a evaluation of the office space and what the rental, uh, what the facility would rent for. As well as looking at our training grounds.
Don't move.
I can go ahead and second that if Mark, you're muted, Mark, so.
I'll second it.
Very good. Uh, all in favor on that?
Hi.
I should have asked for a comment. Chief, did you have any comment or?
Uh, yeah, just that uh lawn maintenance or the, you know, lawn maintenance is provided by the firefighters. We don't contract out.
Has anybody been out to Station thirteen lately? We'll just leave it at that.
I can't say, I can't say.
I have about, I have a roll of footage. So. No, it's probably done now. The guys are busy and you know what? We sure appreciate everything they do. And I'd say, well, let's leave the lawns to them. But anyway, we just have a diligence to look at all of it, right? Uh, and that's. If that's already in their agreement, it's paid for. So, so we'll go ahead and do that with the letter. Uh, the last thing that I really, I've been going in because I'm learning, Mark, and and.
I I'm sorry, I I just cut out again, but were you guys, were you guys referring to the the rental? I'm sorry, because I even seconded it. Uh, at Station twelve or thirteen?
No, twelve, just twelve.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just looking at twelve. Thirteen was, we were, we were just talking about other, like the maintenance agreements. I have nothing to do with rental. Uh.
What's going on with that property?
What, what?
Not a question for this meeting?
No, you can ask your question, yeah.
No, I'm just curious what's going on with that property.
Well, right now, uh, chief, you want to?
Is Station thirteen or Station twelve? Yeah, thirteen right now is, it's not staffed.
Oh, okay. Is it? Oh. Yeah, I figured that is, are we using it for storage? Is it being maintained or?
It is being maintained. It's um, you know, it's, it's an as, just like any job, uh, you've got, um. They've got a list of things they got to do in a day and unfortunately, getting out to Station thirteen falls. Close to the bottom of things that guys can get done.
Right next to eleven.
With uh, with call volumes and stuff, it can be difficult to get out there and spend a couple of hours mowing or doing whatever.
Well, I I have a a theoretical question for you guys, just in, I mean, with, looking at an RFA coming in the future. And rewriting this ILA and obviously with the way volunteerism is right now in this county and the state and the country altogether.
Yeah.
Years of eleven and thirteen, I mean, do, are we going to continue to hold on to them? Do we need to think about? Moving on with them? What's, I mean. Obviously, I don't see anybody coming to volunteer and and be coming out of Station eleven or thirteen in the future. So.
So you're talking about when you say hanging out. Oh, chief, did you, I was just gonna say.
I think chief knows where I'm going at with this question.
Yeah, the ESI report did talk about District four choosing to liquidate or get rid of those properties.
Yeah.
Station thirteen were essentially seen as surplus. Um, I I haven't pushed anything forward on that. I didn't do anything. You know, we, at the, on the District twenty one side, we started getting rid of some of these ancient rigs that we've had hanging around.
Yeah.
We we are liquidating some of those things. Uh, but I've been really hesitant until there's more permanence between District four and District twenty one. I don't want to do anything with District four or recommend anything with District four because I don't know where we're going. And I I don't want to be the guy that, that recommended liquidating some assets and now District four needs those assets. So I I've made no recommendations to the District four board about them. You know, and the other part to that, uh, Commissioner Chamberlain is, I'm actually really keenly watching what a neighboring department is, Bellingham and District eight. Uh, I, uh, BFD is getting some really good candidates out of their, their part-time program. And I'm watching Captain Heinrichs and what he's doing with his people in the part-time program and we're, we're watching that really closely. Um, you know, to see, see what happens and see what, what kind of uh. Um, you know, to see, see what happens and see what what kind of uh uh things we can glean off of that. So, you know.
I didn't, I'm sorry, chief, but you cut out there. BFD is getting some really good candidates.
Oh.
For any District eight?
Yes, yeah. And so we're watching what Captain Heinrichs is doing with that program. And see if there's a way to implement some of those things here or do some some horse trading with him for experience on. A part-paid program here.
And utilizing the other stations for that.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, that's a, I think that's a great idea. So I just wanted, I I was just wondering what the future like. Are we holding on to those for something or are we just, I mean?
But yeah, let me give you a little update there, Mark. If that was a great question and I I and they are, that does have to go for another meeting, but. Station eleven, it the the master plan through ESCI. Uh that station basically was listed of basically no value. Uh I did have a uh an agency that was recommended through uh Schmellick's office, actually. But I had a agency go out and look at that, no charge, and their recommendation was. Move that, get rid of that place as soon as you can. Um you know, and it's mold issues. It's it's a cost burden. And it has, we could never do anything with it, you know, maybe donate it to the community as a community association. But really, we don't want that liability. We'd be better off, these real estate companies, it would go multiple listing to do it fairly. It would go overnight, it would be gone. Uh it would not be there for more than a day to two days. Because they have people that buy those as-is. Station thirteen, I believe Commissioner Anzal from uh addressed with Commissioner uh Andrews. And I believe. It's not, it's not, it's it's well worth holding on right now to. Uh Dave Ralston has a very proven program. District eight had some proven programs, but. District uh two had a really proven program of taking these houses and turning them into like duty shift. Is that the correct terminology? Duty shift houses? Recruit. And who knows, you know, Heinrich can take those guys on too. He does a great job, but I think.
You could ask him. I'll tell you that. Uh I just want to say that uh whatever it be, if we're to eliminate eleven or whatever. Well, it's just that would have to fall in with communicating to those people that live out there. I'm sure they all drive by. If they were to see that it was just all of a sudden gone, then.
But 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 so so but I don't wanna, I hear what you're saying. And that's why we're talking about getting a letter out to them because right now it's really a smoke and mirrors game to them and that's not fair. I spoke with fourteen residents out there. Out of fourteen, nine of those residents told me, we have a fire station right up the road. It's great. Our response is from here. And unfortunately, our volunteer have gone by the wayside and we don't have that response. They get a great response out of twelve. And and I bet you those guys are out there probably. It's a ten, ten-minute or twelve-minute response out to that area. But and we also have Bellingham coming if it's anything to do with the fire. But it always wears every engine. We can't always, right? Twelve isn't always there.
What you asked. You asked, sorry, Dave, you asking any of those residents out there and. Who they just saw, they're they're gonna think they came from that station. They're not gonna know the difference, really.
That is exactly what they think and they wonder what took so long? Where were these guys?
Yeah.
But I think I think we're addressing it. I think we're we're on the right track and but I think it's important that we. Mark, you really said it well, is we can market this for the RFA. The importance of this RFA is really. Uh how we can better serve those people. And I don't, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that's how I feel.
Yeah, and you know, if we before, I mean, I know this is all under the WRSB.
Yeah.
Of this agenda, that uh that that's something that we hit on. You know, as soon as possible before anybody gets word of that, that we let the public know that, oh, this is not, this station is not staffed. It's. There's no volunteers responding to it. And there's a potential that it's gonna be disappearing. But just to let you know, we have a three-man company here that's been. That's, this has been your service ever since. And I've been out in the. The the three thousand block of North Shore Road uh responding from Station four in Bellingham. And it is a long response and those people know they're aware of how long it takes to get out there. I just don't think they realize how long or they don't realize that there's. What station they're coming from or where they're coming from or the fact that. Nobody's responding from that station from eleven. And it's just, I think it's important, like I've said, that not only this is communicated with the uh, can you guys hear me?
Yes, oh, yeah.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
We can hear you. You're ventriloquist.
I think it's just important that we communicate this to the public. But I think it's important that we just communicate this with the public as much as we do communicate between uh the. Twenty-one board as well and work together, so.
Absolutely.
Sorry, but it's a little elaborate and too long.
Yep. It it it. It'll be, it's something, you know, again, I think we should add the Station eleven uh portion on to our June meeting. Uh but that's up to you guys. You guys can let Chris know what you uh you want to see on that June meeting agenda. That, is that the sixteenth of June?
Yes.
Yeah.
And on that note, gang, I kind of definitely went uh into stuff a little far. But it's good that we're talking and it's so great, Mark, to have. You on board and have now three commissioners instead of two commissioners. Um, you know, trying to decide things. It's just an uncomfortable feeling. Uh Commissioner Andrews, uh again, we hope your wife's doing well. Everything's going well.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
And go ahead, Harry.
I was gonna ask the chief, do we still have equipment in elevens?
Yes.
Station, and do we still have equipment in twelve or thirteen?
Yes.
Both stations are have equipment.
Yeah.
Not necessarily responding equipment, but.
Station thirteen does not have any equipment in it currently, no.
Well, it did have an engine and an ambulance at one time.
It did.
It does have two eight cars stored in there as of yesterday, I believe.
Yep.
For, but those are just storage.
Correct.
Just wondered about that.
I I would, if we get ready to close out. Um I started to state is again, I think it's uh it's important we run as much stuff through Chris and that way it's easy to filter back between the three of us. And Chris, it's so important that we're transparent among our group. So everybody's kind of seeing what's going on. If one of us is. Asking questions unless they say, don't tell Dave, then I understand. But I want to just.
As long as we're transparent in the meetings.
I I I want, I, Mark, it'll come, that'll come to me when I rewatch it, I'm sure. Uh I want to just really once again make it known. I I loved it. When I met with the local one oh six uh and the Northwest chapter, as well as I would call it chapter or group. Uh section. Uh Robert Glorioso was was uh was was very awesome in in many ways because he said. I want to let you know, we are here, the internet, the the local is behind Chief Vanderveen. And we want to see him be successful and which made me feel good because I know. Our board wants to see him be very successful. Uh but then uh Mr. Glorioso says to me. I'm talking two hundred and fifty plus members, why, strong, meaning the county and the local. And I think that's fantastic that. I've never been very few. The only other chief that I know in a long time that had that kind of support is Chief Bill Hewitt from the city of Bellingham. And Bill, I love uh, I love um, you know, that what my friends in there share on Bill. And I'll tell you that Chief Hewitt also was the one that gave me that recommendation on Chief Vanderveen. And so Jason, I just want to say that to you is when I come in and sit down with you, it is nice that we have no stripes on our shoulders. We're two people talking and he's somebody that's becoming what I'm calling more of a friend. We openly discuss. Things how we see it and uh he has, you've stepped up to the plate every time and said, Dave, you want me to check into that? How can I help you? How can we all work to bet, get to work better together or or efficient, more efficiently? And I know that Chief Commissioner Andrews is always stopped in and visited at departments and and has a relationship. Uh Commissioner Chamberlain, you've been in this business for a lot of years. But I think it's valuable to every single one of us to be able to go have that visit with with the chief. And if we have questions, instead of letting them fester, um, you know, it's so nice to have somebody willing to offer to sit down and discuss those things. And I really believe that that's the relationship that. We'll have back with the board from North Wacom as well and uh because I I've always said this, I've never said anything negative. Uh. I hope, and maybe I have, but from the first time I ever spoke to Commissioner Anzal, I know that he does. Believe that there's a lot of things we can all do better together and that can be done is talk. So I'm I'm done. Anybody else have?
I just have a quick question, a newbie question.
Are you a probie?
Yeah, I feel like it sometimes. Uh just, is this, is this, this meeting is being recorded on YouTube, right?
Yeah, so be careful what you say about your chief.
No, I'm not, nothing about that. Um I I know that like. And I'm kind of, I'm still in this process of reviewing commissioner rules, uh the the RCWs and stuff. I know like I can't talk to Harry about stuff on the agenda outside of a meeting because it qualifies as a quorum and that's just not allowed and. I don't want to go there. Uh are we allowed to go talk to uh Chief Vanderveen outside of a meeting?
Anybody you want besides Harry or me.
Okay.
You can go talk to the District twenty one's board, any member of them, all of them as a whole. They're in a meeting then, though. So as long as a a board doesn't have a quorum. And there's.
So that's, those are the legality. What are the expectations from you guys? What do you, I mean, what?
It's being recorded, remember?
What's that?
I said we're we're being recorded, you know. The expectations are if we follow the law and we we do, we do. Uh however, there are gray areas to every every law and it depends, it's really quite honestly, Mark, it depends who you're talking to. And where you see this fear go away is when a chief doesn't have a fear or a group have a fear that we're out there. Uh trying to collaborate against them and pretty soon nobody really cares. But we have a large and that's why I say we go through uh our district administrator. She can share anything. And Chief, am I correct? Chris can share with us basically anything that one of us talked with her about.
That's, yeah.
So that just eliminates any fear and um if we're, you're my neighbor, Mark, if I see you or I see Commissioner Andrews. Uh you bet, we used to all board, we used to go golf together.
Don't roll down the window, just keep driving, Dave.
Yeah. You see me taking your canoe, just don't chase me because I can't. All right, you guys.
I just wanted some clarification and confirmation. I appreciate that.
You know, Mark, I can send you some information on that later on too, from the commission.
I I already got that.
You got that? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
The one thing is, is reality is, as long as we're not making any decisions outside of a meeting. Not much anybody's gonna do or say, but.
Yep, no, I completely understand that.
All right, Commissioner Andrews, you have anything else good for the good of the order?
No, none for me.
Commissioner, uh chief, he'll be a commissioner soon at uh Vanderveen.
Uh just just one uh kind of good of the order thing. Um I just wanted to uh memorialize that um today, two years ago, John Swabody passed away. He was a District twenty one. Firefighter who served as a chief for District twenty one and District four, you know, the the combined district. Um and so I would just ask that you take a moment today and remember his passing, so.
Why don't we take that moment, just a real quick moment here and and think about that? All right.
Thank you.
You definitely was a special, special person within uh the organization, but in our community and so, you know. God bless. All right, on that note, Commissioner Andrews, would you like to lead us out of this meeting?
I make a motion that we adjourned this meeting.
I'll second.
I just wanted to keep this kind of YouTube making motions and second it. I can just come back to that. I didn't make any motion on that. All right, all in favor, gang? Uh I am sure.
I.
And the meeting is adjourned. We will meet. Chris, how are we gonna take, we don't have any documents except for the motions today. On the uh legal counsel or do we need that?
Nope, no documents.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, everybody. And hey, we started on time.
Uh so the governor's, just real quick, the governor's proclamation didn't change anything. Your next meeting uh next Tuesday will be by Zoom.
Yep.
Zoom again. Okay.
Again, so.
Hopefully, the uh the Comcast guy won't be sitting outside of my front yard and working on things. This meeting's been.
That the beepin? Jason, do you have us off the video?
Uh one second here, let me.